Please take your seats. Ready to start the second part of our debate. School committee candidates. Once again, I want to welcome you to this evening at the Chelmsford Senior Center. We ask once again that you shut off your cellphones. You refrain from any outbursts or applause. I know this is a Greek civil crowd. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Chris Scott, the Enterprise Editor of The Sun, who will introduce the candidates. He'll serve as the moderator. Chris, take your way.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for sticking around. I don't think I'll have any trouble forgetting a candidate in this race because there are only two. I gave my apologies to Louis. Hopefully, he'll be okay. So look, the ground rules are the same for this. One-minute response, and then if the other candidate would like to rebuttal, they get another 30 seconds, and we can go back and forth a little bit if the issue so dictates. No opening statements, and then two-minute closing. And we'll start again in non-public order, so the first question will be posed to candidate Lapoli. Second question to candidate Tanini, then we'll just go back and forth. For those of you who might not know, there are no incumbents at this table. There's arguably one incumbent who decided against seeking reelection, so this is the first one for public office, I think, for both candidates. Correct? Correct? All right, so with further ado, I'll pose the first question to candidate Lapoli, and then we'll get going. Does being a candidate for school committee with kids, with your own children in the local public schools, make you a better candidate? And please, please be specific in your answer.
Well, I think this. I think when you have skin in the game, you always have an agenda. There's no question about it. My two children, Mary, who's a senior at Chelmsford High School, Sal, junior, who's a freshman at Chelmsford High School, motivate me, and I think that's the most important thing. They motivate me. But to that point, I will tell you this: nothing motivates me more than what's taking place, because it's not just about my two children, it's about all our children. And really, what's taken place over the past six months is kind of a bruise on our children. And being a leader my whole life, and I pride myself on that, I couldn't stand by and watch what was taking place without getting actively involved. So, am I motivated with my children? Yes, truthfully speaking. But nothing motivates me more than the rest of the kids in our school system.
Thank you, candidate Tanini.
Yes, it does. I mean, when this all happened, this all came to light back in October about the fiscal mismanagement, that concerned me as a parent, because as we all know, if we, you know, go crazy on our credit cards, then the next couple of years trying to get out of debt, you have to make sacrifices. And with my kids being as young as they are, and us being in the whole million dollars, now having to try to dig ourselves out, it concerns me that we may be making sacrifices, and I want to make sure that we're not sacrificing the quality of their education, and there's someone there to help them make those financial decisions available, and wise decisions.
Thank you. Next question goes to you, candidate Tanini. What unique skills and experience will you bring to the school committee if you're elected on April 7?
Well, my financial background, obviously. I work in startups, and, you know, startups are not usually well-funded. You're kind of skin and bones type of environments, and so I'm used to making sure that every dollar is stretched and we're maximizing each dollar. I'm also working with CEOs who may not have that financial background, as they're entrepreneurs, in helping them analyze decisions, you know, bring the numbers and the dollars to a certain decision, so they have all that complete information. And that's a skill set that I bring from my financial analytical background.
Thank you, candidate Lapoli.
I work in a family-run business, but what's most important in my business is I listen to my customers. I listen to my employees. There's a level of transparency in my organization, and what I bring is great leadership. I work for an organization that's been there for 25 years. Startups, as my opponents say, they come and go, but our organization, 25 years of doing the same thing. You can only do that if you have great leadership, you believe in your employees, you listen to your employees, and you trust your customers. And most important, your customers trust you. And our customers are the taxpayers and those kids, and I want those kids and those taxpayers to trust me. I have the leadership to do what needs to be done.
Thank you. The next question goes to you, candidate Lapoli. In one of your campaign ads that I heard on WCAP, I think you used the word stumbled to describe what's happened in the school department. Tell me how you arrived at that particular word to describe what's happened there, and do you think that was the appropriate use of that word?
I do, Chris. You know, Chelmsford's a great community. We are all part of Chelmsford. We are here because we believe in Chelmsford. We're here because we're loyal to Chelmsford. And so over the number of years, I've watched our school committee, and I've watched my kids go through school. I've gone through the Chelmsford Public School System, and there was never a problem. But lately, something happened. Over the past six months, something took place that is not usual. Now, stumble is just what that is. We didn't fail. We're not going to fail. With the new people that are coming in, with myself and leadership, I want to be part of one of five people to make sure that's all of us who's a little hiccup. We need to draft a plan and manage to the plan. We need to be serious. You need a serious person in this position, because right now, we've stumbled, we need to rise again and be the once, the great town that we were known for in education. And I promise to help restore that. That's what I'm good at.
Candidate Tanini, how do you feel about the use of the word stumbled? Is that a word that you would have used?
I don't think we stumbled. I think this is a situation that has kind of evolved over time. I think we may have put people in positions that they may not have been fully qualified for, and I think this time just evolved. I think it all came to a head last year. I mean, last year's problem was not, oh, just a hiccup in the road. It was an evolution over time of not keeping our eyes on the bottom line. And so it all came to a head, we turned the corner, they terminated the business manager, put in a consultant. We are moving forward, and I, you know, I would not have stumbled.
I'm going to follow up with that, then you'll give your chance. You mentioned that some people might have been put in a position that they were not qualified for. Can you be specific who you're referring to?
Yes, the superintendent. I think, you know, and I've seen this in business all the time. Sometimes someone's very good at their position. They're the, you know, excellent principal, or in the corporate world, they may be a perfect individual contributor. And you think that as they're, as an individual contributor, they can then be a manager. And those are two very different skill sets. And I think when we look at, you know, someone that's being the CEO, we need to make sure that they have the right skill set. And I question whether or not, in all fairness, we put someone in the position who may not have had all those skill sets.
Candidate Lapoli. Could you repeat the question? Well, her, candidate Tanini, I asked her who was not qualified to serve. She referenced people who aren't qualified. So you have a chance, so you've got a crack at that.
Well, listen, I think when, when a situation like this takes place, when you have over $800,000 in deficit, I think there's, there's more than just one person that's responsible. The board of selectmen, the school committee oversees the superintendent. I think there's a level of responsibility there. I think people have to understand on whose watch what happened. On the school committee's watch, this is what took place. On the superintendent's watch, this is what took place. So, do we have the right person for the superintendent? Well, on March 3, I said I would gather information, I would make a decision immediately, but I couldn't make a knee-jerk decision and fire somebody right away. In less than 14 days, I made that decision. My decision came about after the release or the positions that were eliminated of six new people: two at McCarthy, two teachers at McCarthy, a music teacher, two aides. These people were very critical to our organization. So what happens right now? I hold the superintendent, at this point today, responsible. I respectfully ask the last school committee to negotiate and allow Dark Tiano, who's a resident at Chelmsford, to move on so we can heal and start this process again.
I wanted to stay on the issue for a minute, and I'll come back to you, candidate Tanini. My recollection is that in an editorial board meeting with The Sun, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you really said you didn't have enough information to make a decision yet on the superintendent's future, but it was three or four days later, I think, in a candidate's night, where you really kind of veered toward there needs to be a change made. Is that correct?
That's incorrect, Chris, and I'm not afraid to push back on you a little bit. March 3, I sat in editorial board, and I said, "As of March 3, I would not fire the superintendent." On the CBA, the question was asked, "Would you renew his contract that had one and a half years left, sir?" The answer was, "No, I would not renew his contract based on the lack of confidence that this community had." 14 days later, I made my decision. I gathered the information, and I said, "At this point, I respectfully ask and urge the board to allow the superintendent to move on and for us to move in a different direction." He can't be successful in this town at this point based on the feeling and the lack of confidence that we all have. So, very clearly, March 3, I would not fire him that next day. The CBA, I would not renew his contract that he had a year left on him. And March 17, 14 days later, I gathered the information, and I let everybody in our town know exactly what we would do and how we would react.
Thank you, candidate Tanini. Is that your recollection of how things went down, or would you like to make a comment on that?
You probably know best. I've always stated from the beginning. I mean, I did my research. I was there. I asked the questions. I got the emails. You know, I have the experience. I've been in the corporate world for 20 years. I, you know, I know what financials are. I know, I can read emails, I can do research, I see, you know, what was being done. I didn't need eight months to come up to speed, to realize that we had someone not, we could not in the right position.
Okay, thank you. I think this question now goes to candidate Lapoli. Tonight, the school committee was having another executive session in which it was believed that superintendent Tiano was the subject. I think this is either the third or the fourth executive session now, and there's been very little, very few details released. Do you think it's come to a time where the school committee owes the town of Chelmsford and the school committee, scratch that, you know, some type of explanation on what's happening with the superintendent based on his job performance or lack thereof?
I think it's very disappointing. First of all, it wasn't eight months to make a decision. As soon as I filed papers, within 30 days, I gave my opinion. So eight months is a little bit of a stretch, but having said that, I think it's disappointing when our, on our own school committee, after eight months, has yet to make a decision on what to do with our superintendent, or really give us a level of transparency. It's very difficult for us school committee to heal, to move on, to understand the situation when our own leaders aren't explaining the situation. This, for some reason, this level of transparency that the entire school committee and everybody talks about still to this day isn't taking place. So if you're really serious about moving on, if you're really serious, let's start with a level of transparency. Let's do what you said.
Candidate Tanini.
Can you repeat the question? Sorry.
Do you feel that the school committee owes the town of Chelmsford some type of explanation on what's been going on behind closed doors? And I think tonight was either the third or the fourth meeting?
Well, I keep waiting. You know, I go to the school committee, and I'm waiting for that announcement. So yeah, I think we all are anticipating it. I'm getting tired of being asked these questions at these debates.
Well, you know, the state law is very specific when it comes to an executive session. If the school committee is discussing superintendent Tiano's job performance or lack thereof, that is not a reason to go to an unclosed door. But there likely to be use collective bargaining, so I'll pose to you guys the question that I posed to the selectmen. Would you be in favor of contract negotiations being done in open session?
Can I first?
Sure, you can take it off.
You know, I mean, sometimes I think there, behind closed doors is not a bad thing, especially when you're going back and forth, having that out in public, even when we do any type of merger or buying a company, you know, it's all in secret, because there's so many iterations, there's so many things being thrown out, that it's, sometimes it's just easier to do it one-on-one, and sometimes it's better when the lawyers aren't there, because they don't even, you know, they just add a whole nother layer to, you know, getting the deal done to business people behind closed doors. It's a lot easier, a lot faster, it's a lot cleaner. So I, to answer your question, do I think it needs to be out in the public? No, on certain things, I think it should be done behind closed doors, but that doesn't mean that you can't illegally do a press release, just like corporations do. You do a press release, you detail all the information, you put it out there, something to hide.
Candidate Lapoli.
I don't think it's fair to put those negotiations out in public, because sometimes people don't negotiate for, they don't come across the right way, it may be tempers flare, or maybe emotions come about, and I don't think it's fair for anybody to be able to judge them. I think if you put it out in the public, people would be much more reserved in what they said, maybe not really tell you how they feel. So therefore, I would keep it behind closed doors as far as the negotiations. I would issue and let people know from time to time what's taking place, but I think if you put those negotiations out in public, people that don't articulate themselves correctly, I think there's a sense that they'll hold back. If you're holding back, you're not really bargaining in good faith. And that's what negotiations is all about, bargaining in good faith.
Okay, switching gears here for that, I think this question goes to you, candidate Lapoli. Should the Chelmsford Public Schools have a protocol in place to notify parents in situations like the Christopher Holt situation, like that incident? And what should that protocol be?
Well, first thing that we have to do is we have to do a better job in training than we have. We don't have the right system in place. That's one of my, that's my number-one priority for the children. There were three programs out there. There's SRO, which is the Safety Protection Officer, there's the STARS, which we implement now, that's picking a police officer full-time in our schools. We don't do that right now. We only have that for 20 hours. And then the last is ALICE. ALICE is a national program out there to train our teachers, train our kids, train our administrators on the proper conduct. All these things that we have out there, we do not follow. Now, we are educators, we're not investigators, and I've said this before. I really think in a situation, what we need to do is immediately be transparent, turn it over to the police. Let's not call the attorney and ask the attorney what we should do. When it's 911, we don't call our attorney, we call the police, because they solve problems for us. In a situation like that, we call the police, we turn the investigation over to the police, we then ask them, "When can we immediately release this to our public?" We have parents out there that need to know, so we're in, we're educators, we're not investigators. Get the police involved right away and allow that process to take place, because if we interject, if we try to conduct our own investigation, we might create a problem, and we might allow potentially a flaw to the investigation.
Candidate Tanini.
Well, I believe they are required to call the police immediately when there's a, when there's an incident reported. Their first call should be to the police to investigate it. But in this case, with what happened at Center, right, there should be a protocol. Protocol should be, as soon as information, when you can release it, you set up, you send, you know, information to the parents, you set up a guidance council available, you provide resources, you communicate, and you communicate often, even if it's just an update. And you have that continuing loop going back until all issues and all parents are comfortable with sending their kids to school and making sure that everything has been resolved. On top of that, you need to provide that to the teachers. Teachers are working with this person. They need resources and guidance, and so they're embraced as well. We didn't do any of that. So yeah, there needs to be protocol, it needs to be broken if we don't, if we don't already have it, which is a shame that we don't. But yeah.
Whose fault is that, if that doesn't already exist? Is that the rest with the superintendent and his administrative team, or is that the rest with the school committee?
Well, the school committee works with the superintendent to set the policy. So the superintendent is the driver of policy, of vision, and works with the school committee to set that. But with that being said, the school committee should be holding him accountable, and if it's not on his radar, put him on his radar as an action item through, you know, goals, through annual reviews, just like any, you know, board would do with a CEO in an organization.
Candidate Lapoli.
I think it's absolutely the school committee, the superintendent's job, about us, I think it's absolutely, I love it. I think it's absolutely the superintendent's responsibility to communicate that to all teachers of what should take place. I think it's absolutely the school committee's responsibility to oversee, working with the superintendent, the best practices. We don't have the best practices when it comes to the safety of our children, period. Number-one priority, safety for our children. So we're going to communicate, we need to do a better job, get that information when it's released, when we're able to, when the police say, "Go," we instantly get to our parents, we instantly get to our teachers. There can be nothing more important than the safety of our kids when they come to a school. They should be concentrating on the education, not being fear.
Candidate Lapoli. Candidate Tanini certainly inferred that superintendent Tiano has not been accountable to the current school committee. I would correct that. Okay, so do you agree with that? And what would you do to ensure that that changes if you're elected to the board? Would you agree with the same argument?
I think, I think superintendent Tiano has made some big mistakes over the past few weeks as far as I'm concerned from March 3 till today, and one of them was the $600,000 deficit that we have. I was at the school, school committee, when I heard that the superintendent and the board, they were going to go to the town meeting, and they were going to be united, and they were going to fight. Well, as soon as Paul said that he was only getting $52.4 million, and he had a $53 million budget, what happened? Instantly, we cut $600,000 up. We cut six positions. That doesn't sound like a very good united team to me. You know what? That sounds like a knee-jerk decision. Where was the rapport with the other boards? Where was the transparency? I was, I was promised. I was promised as a task pair, as a concerned pair, that they were going to fight for our children. You know what they fought? They cut music. You know what they fought? They cut teachers. You know what they fought? They cut aides. You know what they fought? They cut essential, essential programs for our children. Why do we have to cut teachers in a situation like that? That's the most important thing we need to do. So therefore, I hold the superintendent accountable for that, I hold the school committee accountable for that. They made me a promise, and they broke their promise.
Candidate Tanini.
So how would I hold the superintendent accountable is your question?
Yes.
So you do that through?
Lapoli, you have a committee to answer.
Sure. So you do that through the annual goals, you can set quarterly goals, you can set monthly goals. But on top of that, what I would also do, what they're not doing today, in which if I was elected, I'd try to push through immediately, is an action item. Parents come up during the school committee meetings. They, there are issues, whether it's busing, kids not being picked up on time, or, you know, whatever issues, and there's no action item with the follow-up. I mean, that's just basic management, right? You know, you have, you know, any executive management session meets once a week, and they have their, you know, action items, and you follow up and you manage to make sure you're attacking them. That, you know, those are the steps that you take, whether it's, you know, weekly, daily, monthly, or annually, and that's how you can measure whether someone is doing their duties.
Sal, you talked about the superintendent making a big mistake. If you had to identify a handful, say, the three mistakes that you've seen him make, what would those three mistakes be?
Identify three mistakes? Well, I think the first glaring mistake that I see is, as soon as we were told that it was a budget problem, late in the fall, immediately what happened? Science, math, and an English coordinator let go. A librarian let go. That, that seems to me was a decision that really didn't solve the budget crisis. Imagine, we had a million dollars, we cut about $150,000, and we think that was going to solve it? You know why? Because at that time, it would have been foolish for us to make a decision like that and start cutting people across the board. We should have calmed down, we should have evaluated the situation. It was a million-dollar mistake. That was the first one that we didn't do. We didn't effectively make the right decision. The second one, as far as I'm concerned, that we didn't make a decision in the accurate way, was the superintendent at the board said, "A year and a half, I knew that we were going to take away two teachers over at McCarthy." Everybody heard that. But yet, going into this year, two people retired, we add two more to the board. Those two teachers had come from different parts of the organization, and what happened? Their positions were eliminated. That's not very good trust to me. You made two teachers come over at McCarthy, and after the first year they were there, you eliminated that position. That's a morale flaw. That's a serious flaw. And then the last position, as I said, three positions, what happened? Six positions got eliminated. They didn't fight. They didn't fight for us. They just immediately eliminated six positions. That takes leadership and management. And when you're a leader of a company for over 25 years, you realize that you don't make those decisions quickly. You step back, you talk to the schools, you talk to the other boards, you talk to the finance committee, the selectmen, the town manager, and then you collectively make those decisions what's best for everyone. Not just cut $600,000 in a matter of a few days. That doesn't sound like management to me. Three clear decisions.
Okay, time's up. Candidate Tanini.
Three variations, three, what was the question?
Mistakes.
Mistakes. So the first.
What have you seen?
So the first mistake is he wasn't managing his people appropriately. Because had he been managing and holding his staff accountable, we wouldn't have been in this mess. So that's the number-one mistake by far. The second is not embracing, you know, it's come up to light, and not embracing your peers, meaning, you know, the FinCom, the selectmen. I've seen this repeatedly in corporate America, right? It's hard to go to your board of directors with the problem. You try to cushion the blow, right? They try to soften it, as opposed to just coming out saying, "This is our problem, let's work together, and how do we get a solution?" And the third is, since how everything happened, the communication, whether it's the firing of the three administrators, whether it's the communication to the town reps when we were up here in town meeting, or whether it was with, you know, how we communicated the sexual assault of the child to the parents.
Okay. Okay, that's great. Yeah, my colleague who covers Chelmsford a lot in the last, he gave me some suggestive questions, and this is a good time to ask one of them, and this strikes at the heart of them, the communication to the other, to the other town boards and other town officials. So let me just read this, and I think candidate Lapoli, you can take the first bracket. "When the school budget issues came to light this fall, members of town government, including town manager Paul Cohen and other town boards, were surprised that school officials had never come to them for help. What is your assessment of how the school department leadership and the school committee have worked collaboratively or not with other town officials, and what would you change about that relationship?"
Leadership comes in very many forms. One of the greatest things you can do as a leader is not be afraid to be vulnerable. It's okay to make mistakes, but I think when you make a mistake and you don't come forward or ask for help, that's always eaten the problem. So what I think we should have done is, we made a mistake, come forward, explain the situation, and look for us to move on from it. So clearly, the lack of understanding, clearly the lack of communication, I think, is at the heart of this.
What would you do to improve that?
I would make it mandatory that the boards are constantly speaking, and I'm disappointed that we're not doing that. I'd make it mandatory that we're communicating with our parents, and we're not doing a very good job of that. You know, when you're managing people, you're communicating, and you're having a morale issue, you know what the best thing to do is? Everybody get together and talk about it. But we don't do that. We create these silos. We think it's okay for the school committee not to talk to the town manager and the finance committee. Imagine, major boards like that, they have to read it in the newspaper, whether it's the Lowell Sun or through social media about a crisis or a particular problem. I've spoken to every, I've spoken to finance people, the selection, the town manager, I've spoken to the power players, hall of principals, I've spoken to the treasurer. You know, we've done our homework on our side, and you know what we realized? No communication. That's unacceptable. You want to, you want to move forward, it's all of us together, or none of us at all. And if we're not all together in this, we can't be successful.
Okay, what about the tri-board meetings that candidate Dixon referred to earlier? What happens at those tri-board meetings?
Well, once a quarter. Is that what we're talking about?
Candidate Tanini, how would you, how would you improve that collaborative spirit between town boards and the school committee?
You know, in all honesty, you'd get someone who could, who could run the school department and who does that, because I, you know, maybe because I have the privilege of reading the emails, because I did request emails, and if someone doesn't want to talk, and doesn't want to work with other departments, there's not going to be communication. So if, you know, if you, it's only as good as the leader that's there, because there are mechanisms for the town. There is town meeting, there is tri-board meetings, there's FinCom. This is a small town, and if someone doesn't want to speak to them or wants to look back at information, which when you look through some of the emails, you can see that very clearly, then you can't force someone to be open. It's time to make the switch.
So you both agree that it's time the Chelmsford School Department hired a new superintendent?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. So what qualities should the school committee look for? Maybe one of you will be on that, in hiring a new superintendent. Candidate Tanini, why don't you take it?
Sure. So, you know, obviously, someone with a vision, an educational vision for the school system. You want someone who has budgetary experience, someone who is not afraid of being held accountable and who can communicate well. Just like, you know, any type of qualifications you look for for a CEO or for a mayor, you want those experienced and self-awareness. You want someone who has self-awareness.
Candidate McCully.
You want to surround yourself with great people. Don't be the smartest person in the room. And I think what's happening right now is we want to be the smartest guy in the room, the smartest gal in the room, that CEO, our leader. Don't be afraid to surround yourself with quality people. Go, let's go after these people. I think one of the biggest problems we have is right now, today, it was suggested that the next town manager has to be a CPA. So what happened? We put CPA on the request, preferred to be a CPA, and you know what? We're down to two applicants, we disregarded both. The truth of the fact is, of 200 business managers that across the state, there's only five of them that are CPAs. Frank Antonelli, we all agree, is a wonderful CPA, I mean, a wonderful business manager and we should be after him. He's not a CPA. And why? Because we have put restrictions on certain things. Don't be afraid to surround yourself with great people. Don't be afraid to communicate.
Candidate Tanini, do you think the school committee should hire someone from within, as it did with Frank Tiano, or should do, you know, a nationwide or international search?
I think they need to open themselves up to hiring the best person, whoever that person may be, from Chelmsford. I don't think they should limit themselves. I mean, but if there's someone in the Chelmsford that is qualified, by all means, but you shouldn't limit yourself to that.
Candidate McCully.
I think you should find the best woman and the best man for the job. If he happens to be or she happens to be in our system, so be it. Let's give everybody a fair opportunity. I do believe that there was a person and it was equal and this person was within our system and they had a little skin in their game and they lived in Chelmsford. I think that might be, for me, the tipping point. But I will make sure of this, we'll find the best person, provide for our children. Moving forward, we need a right leader, we need a leader that's not afraid to surround himself or herself with the right people. So open it wide up, invite everybody, use the MASC, which is the Mass Association of the School Committee, to help you find the right person. Post, go to universities that are people looking for their jobs, to masses and dark day programs. Open it wide up, let's find the right person for our kids.
Both of you have talked about the leader of the Chelmsford School Department surrounding themselves with good personnel. Would you be 100% confident that if that candidate came from within the system, would you be comfortable with that? Or would you be a little, given everything that's been said and everything that's been written about the state of the Chelmsford School Department right now, do you think that's really the way to go?
The best woman or the best man is what's best for our children. And if that person is in our system, I support that person 100%. I think we'd be doing it injustice. We wouldn't be who we are, which is one of the best communities out there, if we weren't giving everybody an opportunity to participate in this. And if that person exists in the town of Chelmsford, why not? Why not give that person an opportunity to jump into the race?
Candidate Tanini.
I can understand why you would ask that question, right? It's that transparency, you know, maybe trying to distance ourselves. I think it's the process of how you do it, right? If you do an open process and you have candidates in your upfront, open and transparent to the community about these candidates coming in, then I think, yeah, it'll take away any of that question of, you know, someone's friend or someone this or someone that. But, you know, it's the process and how you do it and how transparent you are as the community.
If there's an in-house candidate, do you feel that that person should immediately jump to the list of finalists? And the reason I ask that is because Laura's searching for a new superintendent and its consultant from the organization that you mentioned asked the school committee that question.
Yep.
And kind of like a lower question if you ask me, but of course, the school committee said, "Absolutely not." Do you feel that that should be the best?
They shouldn't jump to, no, you should look at all the candidates and assess them each individually. They don't jump to the finalist list just because they live in town.
No, because they live in town.
Or work in town.
Work in the school.
Yeah, no. I mean, it's all based on qualification.
Candidate McCully.
Only the best is a bargain for Chelmsford. Only the best is a bargain for Chelmsford. So we have our work out. We have a city right next door that'll pay at least $50,000 to $60,000 or more per candidate. We've got a lot of work we have to do. If we settle, then we'll only have the same problems we've had in the past. Don't settle, strive for the best. That's what we teach our kids. No matter what we have to do, we will find the best candidate for the job. Just realize that we should be transparent, we should explain the situation, we should educate our taxpayers, educate our kids, let our deans know, but only the best is the bargain. Whoever is the best for Chelmsford, whether they're teachers or a dean or whatever it is, if they're right for the job and right for our kids and it's transparent, they deserve an opportunity.
Candidate Tanini, in light of the recent financial events involving the Chelmsford School Department, what accountability measures would you put in place to ensure that it does not happen again? Please be specific.
So you have the budget, right? So you need to report budget versus actuals. You need to put in metrics in place. I'd like to get into a little bit more detail about assumptions going into the budget. For instance, you know, one of the things we have is the special needs. You know, what are our assumptions? How many kids are in there? What type of costs are associated with the kids? Is that going up, right? So I want to understand from an analysis perspective, if those expenses have changed, not that they just changed and they went up and that's why we're off, but I want to know why. Was it because someone changed our contract and changed the rate on us unexpectedly? Was it because we had three people move in? Was it because there were, you know, four people that left or whatever? But it's none of this, oh, they just went off, it's up $100,000 and that's high, that's low, and let's move on. It is that those specifics, that what were your original assumptions and what changed? Because that's the only way you learn and make a better forecast the next year. And that's how you can manage, right? If something's going up, if it's an outside contract that's going up on us, that gives you power to say, "Let's go try to renegotiate that or put this up to bid." Those are the ways that you can manage your budget and efficiently and take advantage of opportunities.
Thank you. Candidate McCully.
Sure thing. This is a question concerning accountability measures. In light of recent financial events, what specific accountability measures would you put in place if you were elected to ensure that this isn't repeated in Chelmsford two or three years from now?
Well, first of all, what we had prior to what we have today is unacceptable. We had a three or four-page summary sheet for the entire budget to let you know exactly what was going on. You know why? Because the system that we had, the software that we had in place, UNIS wasn't being actively used the correct way. Frank Antonelli let us know that, let me know that person. So the first thing I would do is make sure the person that we have as the next business manager understands UNIS. And that means being able to put all the numbers in the right category. The second thing I would look to do is stop making all the bids open. Do you know right now that we give out contracts maybe in excess of $500,000 without even a bid? We just award it to anybody? That's wrong. We shouldn't do that. Number three, what I would be doing is constant training in UNIS. And what does that mean? Not just one person. We're talking about the superintendent, the assistant superintendent. How about the school committee understanding what UNIS is all about? Other people, so we can have effectively more eyes understanding the metrics rather than this. And if you had more eyes understanding what was going on, I think you'd have a clear path of what the right direction was and where our numbers were constantly. You know, one of the biggest things that we did is we would allocate dollars, we might spend $50,000 in one year, the next year we would budget $25,000. Where are we going with this? No communication. Nobody sounded sounding a red alarm saying, "That just doesn't sound right." That's communication.
Thank you. A question for candidate Tanini, and I'm watching the clock here. I think we'll have another couple of questions, then we'll move to closing statements. "The board of selectmen of the school committee are seeking a review from the state DOR to determine whether the town could benefit or should consider consolidating town-school physical operations. What is your view of this effort?"
So I think, you know, anytime you have another set of eyes looking at your processes, it's always a good idea, because then you can come up with efficiencies that you may not have thought of. With that being said, if there is a financial reason to consolidate, meaning you could save money, by all means, you should seek it. But only if it makes sense. So I'm not opposed to someone coming in and reviewing the processes.
Okay. Candidate McCully.
I'm never afraid of free advice, especially from the state of Massachusetts, the Department of Revenue. So therefore, what I would do, absolutely, I would invite them to review everything that we're doing. Tell us what we're doing wrong, please. Find something that we're doing wrong so we can fix it. But when I'm not in favor of just transplanting problems that we have over the superintendent or the school committee and moving those problems over, whether it's financing payroll over to the town and expect them to pick up that, that doesn't sound like good business to me. Because you know what Paul Cohen's going to do? He's just going to allocate and deduct that cost of what the school was over to his budget. He's going to take that price away from us when he gives us our budget. So I'm in favor of free advice. I'm in favor of DOR taking a peek at it, but you have to understand, if they were to come up with an idea, is it a good practice? Is it cost-saving? If it's not a cost-saving, why would you do it?
Fair enough. Question to you, Sal. Chelmsford is one of only a small number of communities in Massachusetts that does not offer full-day kindergarten to its residents. Is this a failure in leadership or a lack of funding? And what would you do to change that around?
First of all, it's both. Imagine Chelmsford, 85% of the surrounding communities have early education, have kindergarten. We don't. Really? We were once the leader in education. Why don't we have full-day kindergarten? I talked about two approaches, two priorities that I would have. The first priority was always the safety of our kids, the second was the full-day kindergarten. Us not being able to fund kindergarten is disappointing. Grant 701, $122,000, given by the state of Massachusetts, with all the problems we have. You know, we gave that money back. We had to give that money back because we didn't fund full-day kindergarten. Kindergarten's about $800,000. We need to find a way to fund that. So I blame and I hold people responsible for us not having full-day kindergarten. 85% of the surrounding communities have it. Our kids don't. Early education, and this is a tax burden on our people. Imagine half-day kindergarten we have right now. There are people right now and we can help eliminate some of their expenses. Not only do they do half-day, but they also do full-day kindergarten behind that. They pay for that. Wouldn't it be nice for those people not to have to pay for in excess kindergarten?
Candidate Tanini.
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Chelmsford is one of a few communities in the state that does not offer full-day kindergarten to its residents. Do you view that as a failure of leadership or a lack of funding? What would you do?
So I do put a lot of blame on the leadership on this and the reason why is because so many other communities at this point have it. So they've figured it out with the funding to get it in there. With that being said, one of the things we didn't explore, we've gone in with this all or nothing deal. Either we fund it 100%, but we don't have it. And we've never done a survey, or I don't believe you've done a survey, and asked the parents, "Can we, are you willing to pay something?" And maybe that's the way, and I wish, and I actually spoke to some of the school committee members, before we give up this $122,000, maybe, you know, let's take advantage and maybe we put it in that we paid for, the parents paid for it. And then with the goal of getting it fully covered in X amount of years. But I would hate to throw away this money without exploring, at least asking the parents if they're willing to do this.
A quick 30-second rebuttal from Sal, when you can come back to it.
I'm not in favor of raising taxes or raising expenses on parents that have their kids in kindergarten right now. That's unacceptable. I'm not going to raise taxes, I'm not going to ask parents to pay more than their fair share. They're already spending as much money. To ask our parents right now, "Why don't you pick up the bill or something that the school committee or the superintendent should cover?", I'm not going to do that. But I will tell you what I did. In the first 90 days, this is what I planned. I planned to sit down and I've already spoken to some of the most powerful politicians in Massachusetts. When I explained to them that we didn't have full-day kindergarten, they actually said, "Chelmsford doesn't have it." "Yes, sir." "Yes, ma'am." I said, "Will you sit down with us in my first 90 days after I become a member of the school committee and help us fund full-day kindergarten?" The answer is yes, they will sit down and they will listen to us. But asking the parents to pick up a bill, I won't do that.
Candidate Tanini.
Sure. Did you ask them if they let us keep the $122,000?
The answer is no, we can't, because they can't fund it right now.
So what happens when they can't find the money? Where are they going to take it from?
Are you assuming they can't?
Well, you know, we were, again, we were short a million dollars last year. We let people go. You're upset that we're short $600,000. Why, if you're making these calls, please ask them to step up now.
So what you're saying, candidate, and you've said this before my opponent, you've asked me to personally call when a problem arises, you've got political friends, and asked the governor to send a blank check. We didn't know what happened, how it happened, how much the problem was, but your point to me was, well, you could have helped us out. I can help us now moving forward. The governor's not going to send a blank check. The governor's not going to send money to a town that mismanaged fund that's in the deficit. What we need to do is get our house in order, respectfully sit down, and in the first 90 days, help solve this problem.
Okay, well, that's cracked. Then my editor Jim Gately has a question.
No, I'm done.
You're sure?
Yes.
Okay.
This is an open-ended question. In light of recent events where Chelmsford has mismanaged fund, always complains about Neshoba Tech Regional School, which is one of the best-run school systems in the state, and Dr. Judith Klinkowitz could run the Education Department in my eyes. But yet, the school committee and the school administration have fostered this adversarial relationship with a school system that Chelmsford is a charter member and over 400 kids from Chelmsford get very good educations there, yet this school department, okay, won't even give access from Neshoba Valley teachers to come and talk to Chelmsford kids about the value of a vocational technical education. If you're elected to the school committee, are you going to change this dynamic, which I think is hurting Chelmsford parents from looking at educational opportunities for their children?
Candidate Tanini.
Sure, absolutely. My husband went to a vocational school, so, you know, I know the benefits of vocational school. He did continue on and went to college, that's where I met him. So absolutely, and my husband makes a wonderful furniture for us, he has a nice trade if he ever wanted to go into it. And it is an option for people. There are folks who, that's their love, is working with their hands and creating something. We shouldn't not allow our children to pursue their passions.
But do you know that they won't even allow recruiters to come into the school system?
That's unacceptable.
There used to be an open house at Neshoba Tech and they wouldn't even allow kids to go out to them.
Yeah, that's unacceptable.
During school, during school week.
I remember when I was, you know, in the eighth grade and I was at McCarthy and we decided whether or not to go to the high school or to McCarthy or to the Neshoba. They came in, the Neshoba Tech came in, and I remember thinking about it. And I was like, "Oh, what's that? That's an opportunity." And I don't understand why we're not doing that.
Mr. McCully.
Jim, sounds like an ego problem to me. Years ago, I remember being able to do that. We don't do that now. Why? It sounds like an ego. It sounds like to me that we're not thinking about the kids first. Because if you were to think about the kids first, you'd invite them over here and then guess what? Maybe they would invite us over there and some of those kids might be interested in